Back to order from recess. We have one other small matter to take care of the night. Mr. Hale?
Yes. Mr. Dalton making copies so all the board members will have a copy of certain documents. The previous board, which some of us were not on, Mr. Housman was there, Coy was there. The board passed a resolution that covered, that the road improvement plan for the county would be covered and funded in order. Last year we were shown that same list. Something happened to the list and there was a change in the order. I don't believe that can be done without a change of that resolution. And it is about the funding that we were promised last year that has now changed because of an act from VDOT. But there is some money available. Instead of the money that is available being spent in order, local administrator has made a change that he will spend it out of order of the resolution. You have a copy of the resolution. I've worked on this for a year and a half to get this road paid for these people. And it's been several changes, some financial and some by rules. With this change, the money that was going to go to Archer Road this year, and I hope y'all remember this because it's pretty important to me, but it's really important to the people that live there, they had it budgeted at 3.3 million. In session, we questioned that number and we asked them to reduce that number to roughly 300,000. Everybody remember that?
Because they changed it to a rural rusting?
Rural rusting. That money would stay in with County and let us take the problems that most everyone brought to our public road hearing last week, was it, or seemed like a month ago? That wasn't a lot of money that those people were asking for. If we made that economic adjustment instead of spending 3.3 million dollars budgeted on one and seven tenths miles of road, which just has never made sense. It's a 30-foot right away and I don't know how you could spend that much money in that narrow space. There's no bridges involved. There's no reason part of the cost there. So if they'll change it, then this change of where the money's going has jumped into Coy's district. Now they're going to start on Dunford Road.
Is anything good happening over there?
Well, I'm trying to keep it from happening, Coy, right now. If we believe this ordinance that was passed by a former board, that they would stay in order as funding come available, then I don't know how, and I guess this is a question to Mr. Dalton, how did that change happen, that the money went from Archer Road to Dunford Road? They don't have a right-of-way agreement on either road for the extra widening. And when the constituent from Archer Road questioned the administrator, he said, "Well, I can have all of Dunford Roads by the 1st of July and I'm going to start spending money there."
That is the VDOT, I'm sure.
That's right, not the county. We'd be having this conversation in private if it was you. But the change can't happen that way, I don't think.
Actually, Joe, y'all adopted a secondary road plan last year. Those were the priorities, the secondary road plan that he presented the other night. He showed those changes. Y'all did not adopt that, those changes. It's up to this board to make resolution to this six-year plan. And I would suggest, as y'all's concerned, y'all need to decide which road and how often that's funded. I think what I did hear him say in the public hearing the other night, and they've been trying to interpret too much, until we had this board in Archer Road, right of way secured to do the rural rusting, he was going to show on the six-year plan that it was regular construction. And that's the reason 3 million dollars was still there. I'm trying to speak for him since it's not here, but that was, the agency showing that was prepared by VDOT, but no guidance from the county staff. I can assure you of that.
Okay. What's holding up the easement documents right now is them, or the state, VDOT, preparing the document. It's a one-page document. And when I reviewed it a couple of weeks ago, they called it a deed. And I think a deed would be a problem since it's prescriptive easement for the whole road. How would a landowner deed five feet? And what would the value of it be? So that's question one. Are we going to stick to our resolution or are we bound and they bound by resolution 2009-10? Or are they not? And then if they are, he told the constituent that it was up to the board. If we would agree to do half of Archer Road with this funding and do the other half at a later date, that would move it forward. That's news to me. We've never talked about that. So I'm asking the board for a resolution that we stick to the one that's already been approved. And Gary, I'm sorry, you weren't on there. I don't see your name.
But I thought that, I thought that we did, not too long ago, decide to put the roads back on in this order because I know Johnny Lane, VDOT really didn't want to do Johnny Lane because it was regular construction. It was going to eat up so much of the money that they wanted to, they wanted to skip Johnny Lane and come back to it when they had more money. But we decided, no, that they were going to put them back on in the order that we had them. Is that not?
That's exactly true. And that's, I think I've researched in minutes, I can't tell you quite yet, but I think most of you guys were here. Johnny Lane was on the plan to go all the way to railroad tracks. We had so much money, we trimmed it back to the curb, top of the hill.
Right, to, so that they could do the construction.
Do the construction. My understanding, Joe, that that resolution, it's always been the fact that's how we put them back on the plan. This morning, this probably was here when we did that, they went back on the plan as they're taken off in the order that this resolution that you handed out, Chef.
Okay. I guess what I'm asking is a resolution reinforcing the, our current status of resolution 2009-10, that we'd like to comply with that. That'd be one. And then if we're in agreement on that, then your pleasure on whether we would authorize half of Archer Road being done this year, 2015, starting in July, that that money be spent on Archer Road and that would stay in order with the resolution. So it's two things we're talking about.
Mr. Dalton?
Mr. Hale, I guess the point of clarification is, I think, one, what you're trying to accomplish, I think you can accomplish that by sending directions to VDOT that they place it on the plan that was proposed, as you're suggesting, in the six-year plan. It needs to be voted on by the Board of Supervisors. Because the one he presented to you the other night has not been adopted or approved. As we held a public hearing, it will be on the June 10th or June 11th to do that. And if you're saying you want us to give them directions, we can modify that plan to accommodate those wishes, then we can go meet with them and give them to modify that plan that they presented to us the other night. I apologize for not having a copy of that plan, but they gave us a draft plan. You've got to adopt, this Board of Supervisors has to adopt their plan. And I think if that's your input back to only change that plan back to the way it was...
That's question one. Then his communication to the constituent was that this board gave them direction and that we would have to formally, and that's news to me too, that we would have to adopt, that we would be satisfied with doing half of it with current funds. And then if, just like Johnny Lane, Gary, it would stay in place until money's available in the following year unless it gets moved back again to finish that road. Then Dunford Road would be next and right on, down the order like the previous board had approved. So do you think that a meeting, do you think a meeting with him is in order or us to make the move on the half a road or half a distance?
This would be my suggestion, or maybe my suggestion, is that you, Mr. Roberts and Mr. Reeves, meet with Mr. Russell at the earliest opportunity and look at that plan and see how that whole issue of roads can be worked out and brought back for a vote on by the Board of Supervisors.
Well, we're quickly approaching July the 1st and it's hard to stop something that's already started.
That plan, last year's plan is the only plan of record on this approved six-year plan. Until this new plan is adopted or signed, it can't go forward.
Okay.
Mr. Hale, I don't know if you remember it or not, but I believe I stated when this was going on that we had no desire to jump in front of any of that.
I remember that and I appreciate it.
Yeah, because actually what VDOT wanted to do was take the money from Johnny Lane and go to Dunford Road. Yeah, and bypass Archer Road on that, yeah, too, so.
So, Mr. Dalton, if you can set up a meeting with Mr. Russell Thursday or Friday?
I'm sure we can make that happen.
And then we'll...
Don't be involved in it, had to be asked your 9/30, I had this.
Which day?
This Friday.
This Friday, Thursday?
And the reason I brought this up is with, Mr. Reeves not going to be here for the 10th. We need to get this fixed and maybe not consider that resolution until we have a full board here. Is that going to be a problem?
Well, here's the problem that we're saying. If you don't have it adopted by July 1st, it's being due the 30th, the Transportation Board will vote on whatever the resident administrator is presenting.
And you got, I mean, Dalton bought all the...
Yeah, with all, yeah, with all due respect to Mr. Reeves, I don't think that that's, it's going to be a controversial issue.
Okay.
And actually, the six-year plan is about the only power we have as far as the roads go.
Adoption of it.
The adoption of it, right.
Thank you.
So Thursday or Monday, morning is good, all three of them?
Yeah, just let me know.
Mr. Dalton, we have anything else you need to bring forward to board?
Yes.
If not, any other member have any other business? If not, I will recess this meeting until 5:00 PM tomorrow afternoon. Glad to see everyone here today. We're going over some things for the budget this afternoon. Mr. Dalton?
Yeah, hopefully everybody has a front-end summary of all the presentations that we had last night. The speakers. We can go through these individually. Collectively, how y'all like to leave it, that they are recorded in numerical order as they spoke.
I'll open up the floor for the board for end discussion.
Coy, what we have, we prepared all the speakers from last night in numerical order as they spoke with a summation of comments from the tape. My suggestion is that you go down individually with each one of these and comment. The board members have an open discussion about. I think the prevailing theme, number one was the JIDA. The second was the trash fee. Third, Mr. Crockett had a comment concerning raises for lower-paid employees. Ms. Castle, representing the Electoral Board, about the voting machines.
Okay, we'll take up the JIDA.
And Sharon King also bought water rates. And I haven't had a gentleman drop down my house to help with water.
I'll open up the floor discussion on JIDA first.
So just I sent you off a proposal by email. I don't know if I think that, I know, you have some people got it, you don't say you responded. Yeah, maybe you have some.
Don't you my shams?
I can hear you now.
Okay, all right. I'll throw that out as, for, you know, for consideration, for the, you know, the reasons that I listed in there. I'll just, you all know that, you know, I have been, you know, dissatisfied with probably the last couple of years with, with the marketing of with County as, as anybody, maybe more so. But at this, at this point, I think with, you know, with what we're, with what we're looking at here, that we, we make sure that JIDA has enough money to operate for a year and basically say, you know, this is, you know, you have a year, actually about 13 months until the next fiscal year begins. And, you know, do I think that they're going to have somebody on lot 24 in a year? No. Although I did put, if they do, I'll guarantee I'll vote to fund them. But, you know, is, you know, that year should give them an opportunity to actually be, you know, responsive to us and, in, you know, what we ask them to do, information that we ask them to gather, the successes and failures that they have, records that they have of contacts who they've contacted, what they've done actually to market it and not just, I'm not talking about just Progress Park, but, yeah, but with County. And, you know, at the end of that time, if it's not satisfactory, then, you know, we, we come back and say, you know, that we don't fund it. But this way, there's an opportunity, you know, for them to succeed. And again, me saying that, knowing that I have been, you know, kind of vocal about, about what has not happened or what I feel has not happened, when, you know, when we'd asked for, for information and not feel like we would, you know, we'd get the information and things like that. But in, in this case, with the, the general feeling of the community too, I think that we will, it would behoove us to, to give them, you know, give them a year to prove themselves.
Mr. Charles, I tend to agree with Mr. Housman on that. I think we should at least give him a change. I don't know much better. Maybe that's what we need, a little bit of young blood.
Anybody else?
I mean, I emailed Gary back. I agree with him. I mean, I mean, we, I know we, we discussed not funding them, but I don't know that we ever voted not...
There was never a vote.
Not to fund them, except, except for the vote to present the budget. But I mean, I mean, when we hire somebody, we hire them on a six-month probation period. So, I mean, if, if that's the reason that we were shutting them down is because they did, did hire him, then, I mean, I just don't see our reasoning for not at least letting them try.
I would say that that, that's, that's not the, that's not the reason, or that's not the reason that, that I was, you know, was, was thinking about. But, you know, this, you know, a year, and I'm not even saying that we, you know, that we fund them like 153,000, whatever, whatever it takes to, you know, to operate between the county and the two towns, that they have that so that they can, they can operate and have an opportunity to show us what they can do in a year.
If we did that, would it be with the contingency of monthly reviews holding them accountable?
I think it would, I think it would have to be. I think that what we would, what I would suggest is that one of the things that has happened, I think, in the past, and for whatever reason, whether it was their fault, our fault, nobody's fault, is that we haven't had good communication. And I think that, I think that we, either as the board or the Economic Development Committee, would need to have regular meetings with, with JIDA. And yeah, Steve, I, you know, basically what, what I'm proposing is that they have got to, you know, provide documentation, they've got to provide, you know, accountability, they've got to, to meet, you know, with us, let us know what's going on, you know, listen to our suggestions and that sort of thing.
My, my opinion didn't, didn't change. Couple things. We didn't fund them last year, or it was a ceremonial funding, as far as I know. It may have showed up in the budget, but it, it wasn't a true funding. I think, Dr. Housman, you, you actually had asked the Economic Development Committee to ask for updates from the JIDA and on the activity level with not specifics, but just what have you done? And I've not seen that. I've been to all the Economic Development Committee meetings. You know, the other thing is, I mean, the county, the board sent a letter predating the hiring appointment that was made with a suggestion on how to best market Progress Park and the real estate that we own. And the next thing I heard about it was just an announcement of a hire. So, I mean, if there was any other discussion, it was, it wasn't put to me. So that's, that's my opinion.
And, and I don't disagree with that. I, I know that they're an independent board, but, you know, since we're the major funding agent, I think that we should have had a head up, heads up before that, before that happened. That was, you know, I don't know how to describe it other than, you know, felt that it was a little bit of a political slap. But, you know, now the position we're in, I'm a realist enough to, to recognize that, you know, right now, with some of the things that we're doing with the, with the budget, we're not gaining ground as far as, as far as public opinion and perceptions go. And I think that, you know, now's the time that we need to, you know, we need to focus on, you know, communication and working with, you know, with, with other groups.
Well, I heard last night, independent board, is it any more independent as a board than the school board is? Or are they both independent boards? I think they're both independent boards. School board may be a little bit more in that it's elected. Have you ever, have we ever seen a budget from a JIDA? That's the question. I don't know. Or is the board being a funding agency or funding agencies even entitled to a budget and budget requests from an independent agency? I don't know the answer to that.
I'll try to answer it. They actually came to the, one of our budget meetings and presented a budget. They never presented that as the other agencies and school board did, but they did come and make a presentation of the request. And I think in that presentation, they said that they would be making some modifications when, and that was late March or early, early April, that when they made the hire, that those numbers would change.
Was that a broke-down budget or a number?
It was a piece of paper with a number of how it was broken down between the three funding agencies, I believe. If we can, I didn't bring all those papers with me, Joe, but...
Okay.
You have anything else?
Well, get to what Mr. Housman said. I don't know right now how much money the JDA, JIDA has. I don't know how much they need. So that's part of making a decision. And I understand from talking to the mayor, the town's put it in their budget. Hopefully, they, they know something that we don't about how much money they have right now. I don't have any idea what office space costs and, and what their salary cost for labor is. And I think those are part of decision-making.
Gary, what kind of performance goals are you talking about?
Well, I mean, all I'm thinking about right now is just in general terms. I know that we would, we would have to sit down, whether it's the whole board or whether it's a committee, you know, Economic Development Committee or Committee or whatever, you know, sit down and decide, you know, what, you know, the major, I think the major goals that we want and then, you know, sit down with... goals that we want, and then, you know, sit down with, with JIDA and come up with some objectives, you know, to, to reach those. Well, and, and strategies, I mean, you know, what, what they would do to, you know, achieve the goals to, or to, to achieve the objectives to achieve the goals. I mean, you know, we, we haven't communicated well in the past. And again, I always go back to, you know, to the John Wayne movie, Big Jake, when he said, "Your fault, my fault, nobody's fault." You know, and whether it's their fault, our fault, nobody's fault, or whatever, we've got to improve communication, because if we don't, we're going to be, continue in the same vein that we're in, which is not a good one.
Art, you got anything else?
I said my piece.
I will say one thing, I will have a hard time sponsoring for you. And my reason is the leadership change, which may deserve a different direction, but the infrastructure has not changed.
So, what are you saying, six months?
I consider, if CEO comes in, you're going to give him six months to turn around. He gives a lot of years to fire the board.
You got anything else, Gene?
No, I was just trying to think, I mean, the only thing with the six months is, I mean, we fund for a year. So, I mean, would you put funding out there for six months, and then in six months you'd have to go back and find funding somewhere else? I mean...
Gene, if we knew how much money they had, we would know whether they had enough money to run six months and then fund it, or a year and then fund it. But, since we don't know what the financial situation is, I think both of you are right, but we still don't have the right answer.
Do you know what to have in debate? Well, actually, we have. I think it was November, October, one of those months, we got last year's audit, they, from those expenditures and reserves they had, they fully funded themselves this year, as Artie indicated. They provided, wrote us a check, we wrote a check back. Accounting nightmare. My suggestion would be that you ask for an accounting of that money. I think the board, the Code of Virginia allows an accounting for any agency that's being funded by the county at any point in time, and ask for those books. My suggestion is, and my belief is, that they probably, if last year's audit is anywhere close in expenditures that have been done, they, they have somewhere close to a couple hundred thousand dollars. I'm going to make a modification of, if I may, without getting in too much trouble, that we look at those funds and allow that funding to proceed as being self-funded. And the difference of that, between that and the end of the year, include that in the budget. I think what you have to do as a group is set your goals of what you want to accomplish in three months, six months, nine months, to a year. Those goals have to be attainable and something that we can measure performance by. Unlike in the past, where we've only measured out there for economic development, industrial development, we've, as basically we've done, as directed in their new strategic plan, they include economic development, which means the corridor, which means increasing that presence down there by recruitment of motels, hotels, or small businesses. Those goals can, are easily attainable as they come online, and you can measure those by number of investment, number of people employed. And any business that you guys run, all of us have to report to BEC, our number of employees, et cetera, for each quarter. So, that, that gives you an opportunity, well, it's longer than the six months, but it gives the opportunity to be successful, because under, well, if you came into a, in a business organization, you've got your business plan, and we have basically changed that and provided some new direction with that strategic plan. So, I think it's probably going to take a little longer than six months, but I believe with the common, combination, combination of the funding they currently have in their coffers and the goals that you set, and if you see progress within that year's time, you'll know what, what's going to happen. I think that may be a compromise that we should be able to live with. But I think there has to be those goals set. You guys set goals for me every year. I think there's, needs to be goals set, measured, and followed through with.
And the one other thing I'll say is, whether all this has been a, a good thing or a bad thing, one thing I think is going to happen is that we're going to be very much more aware, I think, and watch things more closely, and I think that, that the JIDA is going to be more aware of, you know, of working with us as well. So, I think that we can, we can turn it into, into a positive thing. And, yeah, going back to the funding, yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't saying that we, we just say X amount of dollars at the beginning of the year. What I'm talking about is through their own funding and through other funding, that we just make sure that they have enough funds to operate, you know, for, for that year, whatever that is, and it may not be something that we do, you know, upfront.
And I also heard the suggestion of starting the WITH IDA back up and letting them market the corridor. What y'all's feelings on that?
Yeah, in my, in my email, yeah, this proposal, I, I said that I think that we, you know, still need to, to reactivate, you know, WITH IDA. Couple reasons, one is, you know, if, if we want to, you know, you kind of, you know, divide and conquer. And, you know, WITH IDA could do something, JIDA could do others, and that would be, you know, kind of up to, up to us, plus the fact that, you know, you go on Carlock, and there's not just one salesman, there's several salesmen. So, I think, you know, having, if we have a JIDA that's, you know, that's functioning, and a WITH IDA that's functioning, you know, they have to, to be able to coordinate efforts, but you've got two entities out there that are, are trying to market with county and improve the economic and industrial development. So, I would, I would make that as a suggestion, as, you know, I did in my proposal.
Anybody have any comments on that?
If we did that, sorry, if we did that, we kind of need to clear dividing line. I met with some adjoining county today on some different businesses that wasn't county for a change, and they were talking about Montgomery County, where there are multiple economic development agencies that are always butting heads against each other in spite of something. I would like to see a clear dividing line where this is a target for Group A, this could be a target for Group B, and we don't all show up at a convention somewhere and it says, "Oh, we're trying to market with county."
Right. And, and I agree, that's, I think that's a very valid point. But again, that would require some clear direction from us.
And I want clear direction.
Chuck, you have anything about the IDA, WITH IDA? Coy? Gene?
I say if you fund it, support them. If you fund, join IDA, support them wholeheartedly. We're all on the same team to, to get industry. I talked to a lady today that can, she works through Maurice Jones's group at the state, and I want her to come and talk to whichever economic development entity we have, but there's some opportunities for some state backing on some funding for expansion, industrial and non-industrial, and, you know, we all got to do our part too, to try to, to help out.
Well, I agree with that statement wholeheartedly. If, if we move forth with any, any plan, and it's got to be 110%, not 100%, then it is our county, and we all live here, and hopefully can prosper here, and whatever decision they'll make, it has to be fully supported and to make it successful. And if it works, it works, and if it doesn't, then it doesn't. But I think tho- those goals and attainment have to be set of what the expectations are for people to work hard and get to the goals that you want.
Yeah, I think if, if you got a new executive director, you support him, or you don't support it, you know, you don't-
You're saying-
You either got to support him or not, but don't, the six-month thing probably, I mean, that's going to be hard to measure, I think, performance. I mean, I agree with what Gary said, if you're measuring it by Lot 24, there's so many different variables to that. Government Opportunity Fund, tobacco money, you know, projects that would come to the state that would suffice that magnitude, the labor market. I mean, I don't think one person or one entity independently can pull that off, you know, we'll, we'll need a lot of support. So, to get that done, we'll all need to be pulling the same way.
I do have a comment now. One of the things I think that's brought to this about is we've got to think as a whole for economic development, and we got to truly think in the entire, see, I'm not going to use the word whole when I talk about Progress Park, because Millie will misquote that. If we, if we look at the whole park, instead of just dwelling on Lot 24, we'll all be better off. There's all those other graded pad sites out there that are ready to build on, and there's somebody in this country that wants to build on one, or more. And we haven't, and since I've been here, all the conversation's been about Lot 24, instead of all the other properties we got. So, if we're going to take a new direction, let's market the whole package.
And, and I agree, I-
You're agreeing with me?
Yes, sir, I have. It's, we're looking, see, you know, the moon is turning to blue, but yeah, but, you know, I see it, and I, I think it's true with Lot 24, we've been looking for a home run, and I think, let's take some base hits, let's get, you know, some smaller industries, because you know, whether a person works for a, a multi-billion dollar industry, or they work for a, for a million dollar industry, they've still got a job, and that's what, you know, and, and the more things we get out there, even if they're small, I, I still say that success breeds success. If we see smaller things going out there, it looks like a living vibrant place more, and it will, it, it will by itself attract more. So, yeah, I, I'm as shocked as you are, Joe, that I'm agreeing with you.
I think we all agree, I think that, that's what we're, we're looking at, economic and industrial development, but-
You disagree with forming both of them?
I do. I mean, I think, I think if you have two of them, they're going to be competing against each other.
In our part of a pre-organized society, competition is a good thing, and it can be friendly competition, and looking like someone said a minute ago, at different levels of economic development. If, if, the JIDA has been focused, I think, no doubt about manufacturing-
I agree.
And we have let economic development, small business, whether you're in Withfield, or whether you're in Royal Tree, or out in the county, the, the business community feels neglected, that nobody's looking out for them. That's one of the complaints I get from everyone that owns a small business. So, I'd be in favor of having two, as long as they can play in the same big sandbox.
But you see, one of the things, I, I mean, we might even change, you know, the mission of, of JIDA to more of the economic development, and WITH IDA look more in the industrial realm, you know, in dealing with that. And I think it could be beneficial if, if we avoid what Steve's talking about, you know, if there's, if there's cooperation, you know, among, you know, agencies, and not that, you know, butting of heads.
My concern on the two would just be the communication. I mean, Gary brought up a good point about communication between the board and the joint IDA, and now you're going to throw a third entity in there to, to make sure everybody's on the same page. But, I mean, there's, there's obviously a lot of development that can take place, so I don't think extra hands on deck would be, would be a bad thing.
So, if we divided it up between the JIDA, whichever one industrial development, and the WITH IDA, whichever one industrial or economic development in the corridor, do you think that would, that would keep them far enough apart that they wouldn't overlap?
And, and I don't know that that's the way that we would do it, but if we, if we did it that way, then, you know, you would have two entities that are focusing on two very important parts of with county, one, industrial development, and the other, you know, economic development, which would include industrial development, you know, some. But, you know, when, when you get an organization that is focusing on economic development and tourism and everything, and, and also industrial development, you know, that's a big, you know, that's a big slice of the pie.
And I don't know that it's 100% our call to make, because joint IDA involves the town of Withfield and the town of Royal Tree, they may have thoughts about what they'd like to see too.
Well, I guess we have a meeting. We have a meeting with me and Salal, and Wayne, and Mr. Sutherland, and, and the mayor, and the mayor of Royal Tree, Tim Litz, and Michael James. Is it in the morning or Friday?
Friday.
Friday morning. We can discuss that with them at that point.
I think it's, it's important for the county to unite on all fronts. I've read things the town's managers have said and things, and I think we've got to come together.
And I would have been at that meeting if I knew it'd been on Tuesday night, so I didn't know. Mr. Thornton, in the time being, could you find out exactly what funding the JIDA has right now? What they have in reserves?
We can set another meeting before, and I'll be on vacation next week in California, so we can set a meeting date the week after, and we will be able to, we have, by that time, we've, we've spoken to the town, both the town representatives, and we'll get their feelings, and run this by them, and then we'll meet and make a decision. we'll get their feelings, and run this by them, and then we'll meet and make a decision.
If I may?
Yes.
Well, that, those numbers are gonna be easily gotten from the JIDA.
Okay.
I would suggest that we ask for an updated budget based off the actual salaries they currently have and expenses, and that be presented to all three bodies. That way you'll know what they fully expect that they need to be funded, what they have on hand, and what the actual expenditure. Currently, we're just conjecture of what they have. So if we can ask permission to write that letter, or to request all that information, so that we can have it by our next meeting, or maybe even by the Friday meeting. I think that provides clarity to some of the subjects Mr. Hale brought up, and Mr. Housman discussed there a few minutes ago. You're actually having facts in front of you instead of guesswork.
I ask another question.
Yes, sir.
Is these goals, is that gonna be set by the full board? Or are you gonna send that to the Economic Development Committee for discussion tomorrow morning? How are we to go about setting these goals and items that you've discussed today?
Well, I think we, in my opinion, you know, I'd send it back to the Economic Development Committee, let them come up with the goals and bring it to the full board for our approval. Are we meeting yet?
We are now.
That just changed. If you look at the last email, we weren't going to, but now we're going to. That right, Martin?
Well, and, and after those, you're talking about just setting broad goals, right? Okay, and then, so then the full board, if there's something else that we can discuss that we bring it before, we need to add something.
And I think it'd give us a better chance, after we've talked to the two-town representatives, and then we can make a better decision.
While you're on that meeting, is Martha aware of our meeting with VDOT in the morning? Can we schedule around one or the other of them? I don't think they have anything for this discussion.
VDOT will be here, here.
At 9:00?
9:30.
Okay.
So what time we meeting?
8:00 AM.
Eight.
That's 9:30, Coy, with us three.
But surely in an hour and a half, we can come to some generalized goals, if we can keep focused on all of them.
Okay, Mr. Dalton, what was the next one on the list?
The next most prominent discussion was concerning the trash disposal fee, which there will be a public hearing next Tuesday night concerning.
When the town picks up the trash, you know, the people that pay the town the $100, and they pick up the trash, the town pays the transfer station for that tiny drake.
Yes.
I did speak with a representative from Grayson County today, and I know they have door-to-door pickup. And I said, how much do y'all charge? And they charge $156 a year, and that's for door-to-door pickup.
Does Grayson County have land use?
Yes.
No.
No. I don't believe so.
So then, increase in real estate for Grayson County would affect farmland a lot more than, okay.
Their tax rate is 49 cents. And I will inform the board if you heard Blan has proposed a five cents.
Increase?
Increase in real estate tax from 55 to 60 cents per 100. Five in the floor, discussions on the trash.
I don't, I don't mean to be the one to start everything, but you all know my feelings on the, on the trash thing. I do think it's a tax, I think it's a regressive tax, and I think that it has an unequal effect on families. Again, if the family has a combined income of $100,000, you know, $100 to them probably is not going to be too noticeable. But if somebody has a combined family income of $15,000, $20,000, $100 is, you know, considerable. Matter of fact, if it's a household income of $100,000, and a household income of $25,000, this actually has four times greater effect on this family than on this family. And I just, you know, I don't, I don't think it's a proper thing to do.
You know, talking about surrounding counties, I know Blan charges $35 a quarter, something like that. Do you know what Smith and Carol, or in Pulaski? I mean, does everybody, are we the only one, are we the only county that doesn't charge for trash disposal?
Pulaski charges a trash disposal, whether you use it or not, we said it ever res. Carroll County, I was trying to remember if my tax bill over there, trash bill or not. They, they don't operate convenience centers, they do door-to-door pickup, and if you go to the landfill, you pay a tipping fee. Like a tipping fee, and for a pickup load, it's either $20, $25.
Mr. Hall, I know we talked today, you wanna talk about your suggestion?
I'll, the property, I've got a lot of feedback about this, so I'll share with the feedback that I'm getting from, in particular, the people in Withfield. You know, property owners, again, would take the heat, I think with the trash ordinance as it's written, several speakers yesterday, and I've had several inquiries from people that have rental property. And reality is, if you own a house, and you have four rental units, that's $500 that you would pay. If the proposed ordinance is not amended at all, which, you know, people say, well, you can pass that, if Danny McDaniel was still here, he'd say, well, you can just pass it on to the renter. But if you've got a lease, that's not necessarily the case. And if you've got, you know, in some cases, that may make you lose your renter. And so the reason I've proposed a real estate tax increase is because it puts the burden on the property owner. Two years ago, we had a reassessment. I know the county was flat, but town residents, at least apparently a lot of ones in West Withfield, received a tax increase. Also, you know, we increased property taxes last year, so we would be looking at another increase in taxes. The agreement that I, or the solution that I would propose, and I'm sure there's some holes in it, but I've heard, I've run this by people of all different ages, political affiliations, and I've gotten, I've gotten head shakes, and affirmative on all of them is to not make this a mandatory fee or tax on the property owners, but make it, allow people to use the convenience centers if they wish, if they wish to pay a fee of $100. What that would do for town residents in Royal Tree and in Withfields, if they choose, chose to go with curbside pickup, they could pay $100 to the town in Withfield, just using that as an example. But they wouldn't be forced to pay the $100 for the county if they don't use it. I talked to a lady that said she doesn't use either one. She has a different way of getting rid of trash, I suppose. So, and she said, right now, she not paying anything, it would, her bill would be $400 if the ordinance is passed as is. I don't know that it gets us exactly where we wanna be from a revenue standpoint, but it does make some marginal improvement. And, you know, I know, I thought back to some conversations when we had the water line, you know, a lot of people had, you know, some opposition because it was mandatory. And of course, we had to do that because of our funding, but we don't have that funding to fall back on in this, in this case. So, I mean, in my case, I use the dump once a week at least, probably more frequently. I'd pay the 100 bucks, and, you know, I would certainly get my use out of it. It treats it a little bit more, you know, like if you have television, you gotta pay for it, you got water, use water, you pay for it, you got electricity, you pay for it. I think we would increase the revenue to help offset that cost, and free up some more general fund money for some of the increases that we talked about last night. But in terms of supporting that proposed ordinance, I think that's, that's the only way I would vote for it affirmatively.
Two things. One, Artie, the lady who said that she doesn't pay anything is not right. She does pay.
Well, through general fund, yeah.
Yeah, she pays through her real estate tax, yeah. Second thing is, I live in the county, if I choose not to participate, and I don't pay the $100, then it's up to me to dispose of my trash.
Yes.
Okay, well, I mean, no offense, but I know what a lot of people in the country will do.
I was gonna say, I've.
They'll go back to the old dumps, like when I was a kid, it went over the, you know, Gap to the Ridge Road, over toward Wilson's, and there was a bank there, went down to the creek, and that's where the dump was. And we did it because everybody did it. That was just, that was the only place to do it. You burned what you could, and then you threw everything else away.
Well, I guess the decision is, do we, do we say, well, because there's people who disrespect what God created, and what, what we have in the county, and disrespect our county, because there's people who do that, do we put it all on the back of the property owners? That's the decision we're faced with.
Mr. Dalton, I haven't, hold on a second. I haven't read all the ordinances. Do we have a letter ordinance and a fine set for letter?
The state law covers that, if there were a limit, you have the right to set a ordinance, limiting state law.
Ordinance in law without the enforcement means nothing. Now, the lady's gonna get rid of her trash if we believe that scenario. Instead of picking up with the prisoners 120,000 pounds of trash, we can shoot for a half a million next year. That's just not sound thinking to do away with the system. It's not very sound thinking to believe that anybody's gonna participate in a voluntary tax, because they would probably need to see a psychiatrist if they did. But I like the idea of making a broader net instead of putting everything on the landowners. The property owners carry the bulk of the load for schools, and all the other things we have to fund. And this is a service that I think should be as broad of the people that use it as it can. So I don't know what the answer is, other than for every household, like we posed, to be taxed or paid for the privilege to use it. The town people have a problem, but it's not mandatory in the town. They can choose to participate with the town's service for more money per year. Theirs is not $100 a year, is it? I thought they paid per bag.
You can buy a $100.
Coupon?
Per year, or you can pay a dollar per bag for the town.
And Royal Tree charges $2 a month for the pickup.
So it's over $100 a year.
No, $2 a month.
Twenty-four dollars.
Not $2 a week.
Yeah, not a week, a month, I'm sorry. Yeah, did I, I may have said wrong.
The money now is coming out of the general fund, so people that own real estate's paying for it now for everybody.
Well, personal profit goes in that too, but the, I mean, if, if we were changing something with the trash system, then I don't think people would have a problem with it. But basically, they're looking at it as you're, they haven't been paying in the past, which if they're looking at it right, they have been paying up for it, it's just been in their tax, taxes instead of a fee. But, I mean, since we're not changing anything, everybody's just looking at it as, which, I mean, I've had people tell me, you know, don't do it, just raise taxes, raise property taxes. They would rather raise property taxes and spread it out over, I mean, that way, if you own a lot of land, you pay a little more. If you own less land, you pay a little less.
I've had no, I've had nobody tell me that.
I've had some tell me that.
Except, yeah, one person spoke about that last night.
What's the number in all economic studies? We've got paper by the bookshelf here on studies. How many of 29,000 people in With County own property?
You mean real estate or personal property?
Yeah.
Real estate.
Well, only personal property, we recognize as a car, so let's say, how many people own real property?
I know two that don't, my kids. Whichever my kids live.
Well, you can hazard a guess.
How many people? I can, I can get pretty close on parcels, but I'm not sure people. What we do know, Joe, last census, there was around 14,000 residents in the county. Those, about 3,000 of them were renting houses. So there's about 11,000 homes that owners have.
Okay.
Let's say there's 11,000 people that must own all the property in the county.
Right. So my point is, that Gene's saying, let those 11,000 pay for the 3,000 or 4,000 that are not paying, and that's not a broad tax. And they create just as much trash as anybody else does.
But it spreads it out. I mean, if I own, if I own 5,000 acres, and somebody else only owns 500 acres, then I've probably got more money, and I can afford to pay that extra than that person that's got 5 acres.
Well, why don't you give up your land use then?
Let's not go there. I mean, I don't have a problem if you wanna raise land, raise the value of land use. I've talked to, I've had farmers that said they didn't have a problem with that. But they, you know, they don't wanna do away completely with land use.
Well, I don't want to either.
Well, right now, if we raise real estate tax more than a penny, it only increases, a land use land, it only increases at 5 and 1/2 cents per acre. You'd have to have 100 acres just to raise your taxes $5, or 5 and 1/2 dollars. And I, I think that, right now, in all honesty, real estate and property, personal property taxes are the, you know, are the fairest taxes that we have, that we can operate with. I believe, you know, on a national level, that the fairest tax is just a straight percentage tax, no deductions, and, you know, based on income. But, you know, we're not going to, I don't think we're gonna see that. But for us, for personal property and real estate, the more you own, you know, the more you, you know, you pay a little bit. And when we say the more you own, basically what it means is the more value you have. And when we say the more you own, basically what it means is the more value you have. So, so, you know, I'll throw this out there. What if we don't, you know, don't start out with the full $100 and start out with $35 or $40 and increase it $10 a year until it covers the cost of trash disposal? I mean, I have relatives in, in Grayson County and I've yet to hear, I mean, and I have a lot of relatives in Grayson County and I've yet to hear one I'm complaining about paying $156 to dispose of trash. Well, and, and Tim, I don't mean, and I'm not gonna ask you to answer, but I would dare say that, that they're not single, single parents living in a, in a, in a single white mobile home.
I've got a couple.
Well, okay. Well, I said I wasn't gonna ask for an answer.
I've got a couple.
I think it still could be a hardship on some families, 'cause I have a lot of dealings with, with families that I tell you how they operate. They come pay you.
Steven said, put this on.
Oh, I thought he might hear me.
Mr. Paul, they can't hear you.
If yours won't work, I'll give you mine.
I tell you how they operate.
And here you have.
They, they get your check on the 30th of the month. They come and pay me their bill. They're back tomorrow, charged again for 30 more days. Now, I have a lot of people in my area, that's the way they live. And I'm sure you have some in Withfield, Roar Tree and everywhere else in this county. And I still say that $100 would put a hardship on them. It don't, $100 won't bother me, but it will somebody else.
But what we talking about, you know, as far as the property, property level, if they meet a certain criteria that they wouldn't have to pay the full $100?
We haven't talked about that, but we haven't clarified nothing of that yet.
I can hear you.
We did discuss it and, well, we, we haven't got the policy written because the public hearing is still a week away. But it was, I thought it was clear direction from the board that you would develop, we would develop a policy, just like the, on the water side of it, if you met a poverty guideline, is it 120%?
I think that's what it was, which was, yeah.
That you get reduced, very similar to what we do for tax abatement, for elderly and handicapped, reduce the real estate taxes. If you meet a certain criteria, you can get a reduction of those.
Well, how much money will, like Tim is talking about, the $30,000, I could live with that a whole lot better than I could $100.
Well, $25, $25 a year, we bring in about $300,000 if they're 1,200 households. Are you saying 1,200 households?
14.
I, there, I differentiated between the renter households and the owner occupied.
Well, but-
So there's about 14,000 total households.
So $25 a year, we bring in a quarter.
Well, if you're at 25, 1.3 million for 13,000, because you're not gonna collect a lot. I mean, look at your real estate. We may not even be having this discussion if you collected all your personal property, the taxes that people owe to that. I mean, that is part of next year's budget and part of the justification of hiring a county attorney to collect all those taxes.
Well, if $100 would bring in 1.2 million, then $25 would bring in 300,000.
And our trash disposal cost is 1.3 or 1.1, 1.3 million dollars. Or it's what it costs in the county right now for trash disposal.
Well, we, we've sort of put ourselves in the, in the situation where it's gonna be difficult to, to raise any kind of real estate taxes this year because we've already set the, the rate, which would require us to have a whole different set of, you know.
You had the public hearing, you haven't set the rate.
Oh, okay. Public hearing.
Yeah, public hearing concerning the budget. And so anytime between now and the tax tickets, you have the opportunity to have another public hearing and reset the rate and set that rate. But the requirement is to develop a budget, a balanced budget, and have it adopted by the Code of Virginia by June the 30th.
What's the revenue shortfall to balance the budget?
Well, we'll have to take a recess and I'll have to go get my computer too. I didn't bring all that information, but we have intended to use, I think it's between 800 and a million dollars of surplus or past revenues to balance the budget. Every bit you cut, then you've got to add from those, which is talking about a compounding effect. You know, our bond documents require us to maintain a 40% debt service ratio versus cash on hand, which is, if you fall below that, your loans start going up by percentage points, which means that you make it worse because you got, the debt service payments are going to go up. So that, and your fiscal policy requires you to create three months of payments on hand. If the General Assembly doesn't, and we will have this discussion before June the 30th, I'm meeting with the sheriff next week about it. If General Assembly doesn't pass a budget, all bets are off on this budget. Who's, who's essential services and how long can With County fund county operations, public safety schools? Probably two months. And then we, we gotta go away until General Assembly passes the budget. So there's so many unknowns and that's the reason we're so late this year. But, you know, what we will have to do is, just like other things, we'll have to go back through this budget and say, okay, if we've got to maintain the general fund balance to a certain level to not increase our debt service payments and maintain our fiscal policy so that we can borrow money if needed, I think you've got to go back through these budgets and trim some more out. I mean, there's no requirement. It's something we want to do, the Sheffy School, after school program and things over there. We've got a few hundred thousand, hundred thousand or so in that. Got a lot of things we can cut, but, I mean, it's been the direction of the board for 20 years, since I've been here, trying to have access to schools so we can help get programs started for the children and handicapped and elderly people and local citizens so they don't have to drive to Withfield. But those are wants and not requirements. Very much, it's fun in Roar Tree Lake. It's a want, not a requirement.
So to balance the budget this year, how much has to come out of the general fund?
Currently, we've got about a million dollars headed that way here.
And that's with the trash thing in? So if we, if we scale back like I said and, and charge a partial to start off with about $400 and gradually go up to a taze, and if we, if we took and not permanently financed the, and displayed the papers for another year and took a chance on interest rates staying low, what would that get us in?
That probably gets you close. I mean, if, if, I mean, that's your ultimate decision. I think we all see what the Treasury, US Treasury and the Reserve Board is saying. Interest rates are gonna go up. If we wait a year, maybe we're okay. Maybe if we wait a year and we just pay the $175,000 or $200,000, that saves you $450,000 or so in debt service payment this year. I mean, it's a chance. I guess I've, over the years and with financing with the county, we've taken a lot of chances and it's paid off. But we've got a banker sitting there, all you guys are businessmen. I think we've ridden this low interest rate a long time.
Everything, everything I read says the rates will, will rise, but, you know, they've still got to pull the trigger. The commercial loan activity is not robust right now.
So how long, how long would it take us? You know, like, we really heard down the road that like, okay, the feds is gonna raise the rates within three months or two months. How long would it take us to put permanent financing on the debt?
60 days.
How much?
60 days. I thought it was the fastest, because number one, you've got to get the bids in. Number two, you've got to have, hold a public hearing and authorize all those signatures and give the public a chance to comment. And at the end of that, you can authorize the execution of the documents. I have, if I may have a question. Are we just talking about the Progress Park debt or the school debt or both debts or?
Oh, yeah, I think you got to permanently finance the school debt.
Yeah.
The Progress Park debt could potentially be, be satisfied with a tenant.
That's true.
And that's the only rationale for floating it. The schools are not gonna generate revenue to pay that back, so we've got to get that, in, in my opinion, you know. We would only, my opinion is, we only are talking about the, the debt associated with Progress Park, Lot 24, not, not, that's my opinion.
Now, here are the comments from the board.
I guess on that one, do you want us to recalculate that and send you the summary budget by department that shows those changes along with the revenue? We can have that done by around noon tomorrow.
I've got a question that's relevant to that. And this hurts to even bring it up, but when you're talking about getting into reserves and the kind of discussions going on here, how much could we identify if we went back and looked at the budget and put some of the capital maintenance things off? Like the courthouse roof and paint the water tank that's last, needed it for 20 years. One more year is not gonna make that much difference. This building over here, I know part of that money is earmarked for that, but would there be some in the budget to up that ante and how much?
Well, we borrowed the money, there's still about 1.2 billion, Steve. We did not include any additional money into that for next year because we felt, I felt, that once we got started, that that would carry over into the following year and it's gonna take a little bit more than a year to get all that accomplished. So we were pushing that neck, if it was furniture, additional stuff that, that needed to be, the last $100,000 would be in the next budget and we could potentially, and we're trying to do it currently, to save some money from not, not expend all the money that's been appropriated this year in our internal departments, but we can't control that with the outside agencies, so. I would, I'd like to go through that and we'll just highlight it and send it to you. I mean, in discussion, I think we can, there is some money there that could be saved, Joe. But I just-
I'd like for us to make a conscious decision whether and how much can be trimmed before we start spending reserves. I think it would, that everybody would like to know where we really stand before we start dipping into reserves.
You're talking about giving us basically an updated budget with one on the trash collection? 25, 30, what?
I'm waiting for you to tell me.
I?
I'll throw the number out there, 35.
A minute ago, you said you could deal with that. Can you deal with that?
I can live with 35 a whole lot better than I can a hundred.
Can I, I make one comment. I think, and so you made a point the, a minute ago about wants and needs and, I think if we, I think fiscal, some of the concerns I have is if we go into reserves of a million dollars to balance the budget in FY 15, and in FY 16, we're a million dollars behind. Plus, you know, the cost requests and VRS and healthcare and all these other things probably ain't gonna go down. Capital improvements are still gonna be there. I think if, if, if we do 35, 100, whatever, that we've got to, we got to get the wants out of there, as, as much as we can. I think it's important for us, and I heard, I hear everybody saying, you know, I heard some last night, I've had some, some other contact, contacts, that everybody's struggling right now. That seems to be the, and I've heard it from all different types of socio-economic people that don't make a lot of money, people that make a lot of money. So I think in, in terms of, of a responsible budget, it has to include cutting out most of the wants. And then, you know, including some, some revenue enhancements.
Could I ask, and I think that this is, would be reasonably easy to do, but could you show us the possibility of, of, of four revenues, one of me, you know, by taking out what you're talking about, delaying the permanent financing for the Lot 24, but on one revenue budget, show us what it would be like with a $35 fee for trash, one with a $25 fee for trash, and one with, don't, don't anybody yell at me when I say that, one with, with the $25 fee for trash and a 2 cent increase in real estate. Because we're just looking at possibilities, or not possibilities, options. Is that too difficult to do?
No, the real estate, I think you get the same effect if we just tell you, per $10, we just show the expenditure budget, show the real, the revenue budget with a 10, initial $10 fee, and then each $10 that you go up adds that much. And you'll see the difference between-
You talking about for the trash fee?
Yes.
Okay.
The 2 cents on the real estate.
Is easy. It's somewhere around half a million, not quite?
Well, at 44 cents last year, or the thing seemed, the last time we saw it was about 9.2 million dollars. So that's 44 cents, that's a little bit over $200,000 per penny. I mean, what we- I mean, what we book, and I'll go back to that booking versus collection versus, well, just pay. I still don't believe we'd be having all the discussion if everybody paid their taxes. I mean, you can only collect 92% to 95% of what's booked. It's pretty hard to...
And that is something that we talked about specifically that a county attorney can help us do, is that not right?
So on the revenue side, show the, and I guess we can just show a per penny increase of real estate and what that costs and provides and per $10 on the trash disposal fee.
Well, you know, I mean, hiring a county attorney, what we pay, what we pay and what DSS pays for contracting it out will cover the cost of hiring them.
And I think you said this, if he can help collect taxes, we're going to make money on them. I say he, he or she, excuse me.
Well, that's, that's one thing we're going to have to work on. We're going to have to do something to get the back taxes paid and to come up with some way that we make sure we're getting all the tax revenue in. That's something we're going to have to work on with the Treasury and the Commissioner of Revenue. If we have to, you know, hire some kind of a service and they run off a percentage of what they collect or, or charge for a collection fee to the people about the back taxes.
How much revenue is the new personal property tax? How much more do you think it's going to bring in?
Well, we've budgeted $300,000.
$300,000 for all of personal property?
No, for the increase.
For the increase.
I bet you you could come up way short on that.
But that was a conservative number, wasn't it? I mean, it's...
Well, if you, from, what was printed out versus what we budgeted, that was about 40 or 50% of what was printed out, but it appeared. We, and the reason we reduced it so much is I really believe there's going to be a lot of exonerations to that list, that this next year is going to be a busy time down in the Commissioner's office and yeah, you're going to pick up a pretty healthy group of vehicles, but there's a lot on that list that probably are already gone or are not really going to, are not around anymore. Let's see, one else.
You were talking about our expenses, what we want and what we have to have. Are you going to break that down in the budget you send us or?
I'll provide a list.
Okay.
Of what those are and what the costs are associated with.
All right.
Joe, you have anything?
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask one more thing.
Yes, Mr. House.
Water rates, is there any way that we can do those that increase over a couple of years?
I went back and looked at our water rates, Gary. In 1995, when I came here, our minimum water bill was 20 some dollars.
Was how many?
Twenty some dollars.
Okay.
Twenty-two fifty, right in that range. As we expanded and included, we dropped that rate down to $18 in 1998 and dropped the per thousand gallon rate somewhat. Then and again, just a few years ago, we dropped that minimum down to $11 and I think it's $9 per thousand. So currently, the rates, minimum bill and the rates are less than what they were in The water per thousand gallon rate is not changing in the proposed budget. It's just that minimum bill to cover that debt service for those people that have access to that water line. You know, the Code of Virginia provides that, your bond documents provide that you're going to charge enough to cover the debt service. So, and I didn't want to do it last night, but 1996, I went, started with DirecTV. My bill was 1995 a month. My current bill with less services is $99 a month. It's not an essential service, it's a want, not a need. I mean, my electric bill at the house that I currently live on, I lived in there 12 years ago, it was $49 a month. Same bill last week that I got was $122. I mean, compared to all the other costs associated of what's going on, I mean, I understand the problem.
I don't disagree with anything that you said. As a matter of fact, I, I agree with it and I'm not asking that we not, we not, you have people pay it. All I'm asking for is consideration if there's any possibility of doing it over a two-year period rather than a $7 a month, you know, increase in the, in the minimum bill. Now, I, yeah, so that we can tell people that, yeah, we're, you know, it's got to be $7 to cover the cost of the water, but you know, to try and help out, we're breaking it down over, over, over a two-year period. That's a request I'm making. I don't know that it's, yeah. Yeah, I just, I mean, I, you know, I don't even know if we want to discuss it now or not, but I just, I, you know, throw that out as a request.
Is the minimum bill, if we do the minimum bill like it's proposed, would it still be for 1,000 gallons?
Yes.
Didn't you at one time say that instead of doing mandatory hookups, that we could actually do a fire protection fee?
The Code of Virginia does allow that you provide a frontage fee and a fire protection fee, however you derive that. The, the problem, I've always had a little problem with that personally, I guess, the reason, because if you have access to it and I have access, I think we should be paying the same thing. Just because Gene Horni owns 1,000 acres and has got 2,000 foot of road frontage, I've never felt that you should be paying 200 times what I pay because you, you only have one house and I have one house or one access point. If you subdivide that property, that's a different thought process, but, and the fire protection fee, you can do that by district. Fire protection, to me, as we, volunteers are out there, even though we're providing the fire hydrants, a lot of what y'all do is pull out of ponds and creeks and other stuff also. It is a, those people live in front of a water line of fire hydrants, do have additional services, but you know, I guess my feelings have always been that if you pay the debt service on that, then it's available. We've spread that over all the users instead of just the property owners. But we'll do it anyway and calculate it any way you would like. I mean, it just brings a different picture, I guess, out there, I guess.
Yeah.
And even I don't like change.
Well, I guess, I guess one of the things I have a problem with, and I mean, we do mandatory hookups. We charge them $350 to set a meter and hook to it. It costs the county over $1,000 to set that meter. So technically, we're losing money by making them hook up for five years. So if we could just say, you know, instead of doing mandatory hookups, say you're going to pay a fire protection fee until the debt service for that line's paid off, then the county wouldn't be losing that money and if somebody wanted to hook up later on, then they'd have to pay the full price.
I see your reasoning with 350 versus what it actually costs, but we borrowed the money or received a grant, so they're paying it whether you gave them the reduced connection fee because it's in that loan. And that's, that's one of the reasons that, as the Water Committee, we have, the next systems, those go away.
What goes away?
That connection fee.
Yeah.
Y'all made a conscious...
No, y'all didn't, y'all didn't, I missed that, mate.
Was down in Castleton Road?
Yes, yeah. That, Water Committee said in the future, we don't want to deal with that connection fee, it's putting a, on us, those people are already paying the debt service as part of their bill. And as part of that, that connection fee goes away for those future projects. I believe that is what Water...
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I thought. I mean, it was, again, it was listening to the people and the, you know, complaints and that sort of thing and so, yeah, it doesn't affect the line that much.
It doesn't affect it at all?
Yeah.
Aren't you glad you did that on the Water Committee?
I'm not going to say a whole lot about that. I think my district is probably going to be the one that can fix the most because I've got 100 people down there, some, but it could be out of water tomorrow, tonight. And as soon as we get it to them, with that $7 more a month, I'm not going to say anything about it.
And they, were people down there that said they would pay $100 a month to have water. So, I mean, it's, to be without water, and them people down there have struggled with Mr. Riddle.
I understand that and sympathize, but not everybody's on that.
And you know, it seems like Vernon Spring would be the last to get anything out here and I think he'd need it. Hang it up.
We'll have that public hearing.
Okay, next Tuesday night. Any more discussion on the crash? Oh, we've got that coming. Next on the list.
Next on the list, maybe I'm out of order now. Ms. Castle talked about the voting machines with Electoral Board. While it's not in the Electoral Board budget, we did set aside the first year for some funding for future voting machines into a reserve account, but we didn't fully fund it, but we put some there. Some.
Is that under capital projects or something or?
I believe it's 25,000 this year.
And, and Ms. Castle, they are going to make an upgrade on the software this year for, what were they talking about? I went to the demonstration, they were coming out with something new this year and if we waited a year for the machines, it would already be there.
No, that's if we have new machines, there's nothing...
That's what I'm talking about, the new machines, that something was, the new machines that we were talking about buying, this year something was coming out and, you know, if we waited a year, it really wouldn't matter if we, if we went and bought them next year instead of this year.
But they said if we could give the purchase this year, whatever the upgrade was next year, they would make that in addition to the cost. So whatever happened this year, they incorporated the purchase and they would come back in there. It was just a type of premium that they were...
Okay.
That's 25,000, sis. And it's in the reserve for voting machines?
No, it's in this budget.
Well, it's not in Electoral Board's budget, it's in the reserves account, just like we booked for the assessors. That's only the reserve funds we are paying into or issuing, whatever your guess.
I think it's probably the voter machines that are involved in years. I'm not begging, but I just want to make this statement.
They're going to work.
I don't think they will, but...
You got that in the pocket.
We're going to spend that much.
It was something, sis. It was something.
Well, I appreciate that.
The next item, Ms. Myers had some comments about miscellaneous items, paper, et cetera, 700 here, 200 there. We'll look at those again, I guess, and see. She also talked about the dues, the, we do pay VACO dues and NACO dues, we've provided y'all information. For every dollar that we pay into those, the county citizens are, with the benefits with the prescription card, I think it was over 40 or 50,000 dollars reduced costs they saw in the prescriptions last year. So when you're getting $8 back for every dollar, it seems, in Progress Park, we had moved the A Corridor marketing budget from the JIDA over to the county. With this discussion that happens Friday morning with the JIDA, if that goes, as we've discussed, that will go back out of Progress Park and back into their budget.
And what was that number?
30.
30?
About 30,000.
And that money goes to the Commonwealth and they decide how to spend it?
A Corridor. It goes to the A Corridor, Washington County, Smith County, Carroll, Grayson, City of Galax, City of Bristol, fund that. That group, last year, brought in all the site consultants that have located a industry in the southeast over the past 10 years, the With County, for a day and showed them our sites and went through those and made a presentation. That was probably the best meeting we can have, but we also, that group represents our whole region at the auto show and a lot of the other shows that, with the bigger manufacturers.
Is that where Mr. Elliott's funding comes from?
Yes. Go ahead and see, we have any other. Now Sam brought up...
Oh, that's right.
The lower paid employees. Within the Treasurer's Office, Commissioner, they own state pay vans. If the Board wants to do a salary study, we're, we can get that done, but you've frozen basically 900 employees paid throughout the camp. I don't know how you single out just a few.
Well, yeah, I agree with the dispatchers. I mean, we need to raise them up to the comp board minimum, but I don't think we need to look at anything else with the, with the budget numbers we're looking at right now. Unless somebody wins lottery, wanna donate. Anything else, Mr. Dog?
You have the crypt notes that I've got there. I don't see any other discussions really going on.
I think we about covered or retained it was...
Are you near the last page yet?
I'm, I'm finished unless y'all see something.
Oh, Miss Alita Neal, she asked if the county investigated her option for recycling, such as burning the trash or something.
An incinerator, I did hear that. I hope we all listened the other morning. It was passed Monday for the announcement, the carbon emissions for power plants, and the bill is gonna go up. The City of Galax and some others have built incinerators many years ago. Those incinerators, even, and I guess we could build a better one now, and there's a lot of big cities that have it. It takes a lot of trash to make one of those economically feasible. If that's something the board wants to investigate, the, I think we do share with you every year, With County has the highest recycling rate of any county in the southwest. To make, we joined with the Mount Rogers District. The only way the Mount Rogers Planting District recycling rate meets the state minimum is With County's rate brings everybody else's rate up. I mean, we're, I think, Stan, we're between thirty and forty percent recycling now. Nobody else in the district is even ten percent.
And unless we had door-to-door pickup, I don't think we could go, I mean, you know, with these places, you know, just like California, it's got three bins and three different companies come by at different times of the day, on one day, and pick up plastic, glass, and whatever. I mean, they recycle everything out there. But unless you had door-to-door pickup, that, and they supply the bins, that's not the way you, I think, you get up to recycling.
Our waste management company has stopped recycling glass, because it was, it was costing him money to recycle, I think.
Well, you had to pay the tipping fee. Nobody would take it.
I was gonna say, I've got, I got a brother-in-law that works, I think it's at Bedford Landfield, and he said, there's nobody out there to take glass.
Yeah.
They actually crush it down there and put it on the roads, in the landfill. Of course, they're using dozers, so I guess that flattened tires that way.
I will say that on the trash disposal, even though it's, with the new contract, we're saving ten thousand dollars a month. Plus, at the transfer station, when it's implemented fully with the, with our new bidding process, those tipping fees are eight bucks a month, and we're still looking at one-point-three million dollars. I mean, we've saved through the PSA with the tipping fee and with the new contract, several hundred thousand dollars. On a per-ton basis, With County, without a landfill, has got the cheapest disposal cost around. I mean, it's almost, I don't know how much further we've went from the cost fifteen years ago of almost two million down to one-point-three million. We've about squeezed that turn up as hard as it can be squeezed.
Well, any, any talk about an incinerator, unless you've got a customer to buy the steam, they couldn't work thirty years ago and they won't work now. When Galax was designed and built, Haynes was gonna buy all the steam, right?
Mm-hmm.
Salem has struggled along with it, because Mohawk still buys their steam from the town of Salem. And they can generate enough to keep the fire going. But it's, it's not easy to say we wanna go to an incinerator. They're expensive, they cost money to operate and maintain, and they are major polluter.
Well, there are other options out there. There was a digester or something when I first went on the PSA, and they was building a new one, and I offered to go look at it, but they wouldn't, nobody sent me to Australia.
Well, there's one just like it in Pigeon Forge that I went and looked at. If you get Pigeon Forge through Sevierville, turn left, go across the railroad tracks, over behind the concrete plant, they've actually put the second one in. It makes compost out of it. But they still are, the metals and everything that come out of it, there is still so much tonnage that is not compost.
Yeah.
Yeah, the boy over there, he was, he was to start something like that, dude. Did that ever get off the ground or?
No, because to make it work, he had to charge you more per ton for the, our trash. We had to pay him to take our trash, and it was more than we were laying for the cost. It was a great concept.
Okay, she also asked about the public safety director and fire marshal.
There is no public safety director or fire marshal in the books.
There isn't.
There is an EMS director in that book.
But the EMS director, that's one of them warrants, right?
Well, the issue...
It depends on how you look at it.
The issue with that, and I think you've got, is a want. But the ability to buy through the state contract price and collect the money of the billing for those agencies so that they're not dependent upon our hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. If it works like it should, and has another, you come out plus seventy thousand to the positive. If it doesn't work, you're out minus fifty thousand. But it's all about the bill collection. I mean, you've got three agencies doing those collections, collecting anywhere from fifty to sixty percent of the money. They're buying independently. They're buying their drugs independently at this higher cost. Through the state contract, through the county, they can lower those costs to them and increase that collection. And so, it's, if it works, it's a win-win. If it doesn't, it's a loss. It's a want, a bad want.
Mr. Dog, wouldn't we, can we set a meeting sometime after the, going with these changes?
I'm gonna email. We have a board meeting next Tuesday. We have another board meeting the following Tuesday. Instead of coming at seven, let's come at five one afternoon. I'll buy you a sandwich of some kind.
We'll, we'll do that on the seventeenth. Sorry, will you be back by then? Would that be?
Yeah, we'll just reset on the tenth already, until the seventeenth.
Okay.
Five o'clock or four o'clock.
So, I don't care whatever time we'll be out of school, I hope, but then, well, actually, I ain't got one more day left, period.
What time? Four, five? How long you think we'll need? Probably do four. We gotta bang it out at that point, though.
That's a cruel joke.
I'm hoping mine's being put up right now, but...
What's the time? Let's go ahead and make it while Tim's here. We gonna, we gonna do four? I gotta put it in my calendar, or there's no way I'll remember.
I'll never remember anyway.
Mr. Dog, we're going through, Jim, if we wanna put you on there.
Are you saying June seventeenth at four PM?
Yes, sir.
And we have the public hearing at seven? Anything else to bring for the board before I adjourn, Mr. Dog?
Well, I'll bring up one last thing. I sent you a bunch of dates that I was gonna be off.
You've been, I was gonna say, you haven't been off at all, have you?
So, someday, Coy, I'm not gonna be here. I'm gonna be making some hay, so...
I might have to come and help.
I appreciate it.
I dare you, but I'm not.
You're off, you're off for you, you just don't know if you make it.
Some afternoons, I'm not gonna be here. I gave you those dates. We're now two weeks behind with making hay, so I've gotta catch up. Unless Horni comes.
You'll work all night?
I'll do that.
Again, thank everybody for coming. With no other business, I will adjourn this meeting till June the tenth.